Good afternoon, everyone. It is 4:31 and we are going to start now. And as is our tradition, we're going to start with a stand for a moment of silence, followed by allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if we could have a roll call, please.
Wayne Barahona?
Here.
Tom Eggers?
Here.
Brad Hent?
Here.
Pete Hamel?
Here.
Okay, you have before the agenda. I'll take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Support. Roll call.
Eggers?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
We now move into the public forum portion of our meeting. Is there anyone here attending today that would like to address the council at this time? Okay, please come forward and state your name. I do have to read a little bit here first. As you've been recommended by the mayor, come forward to the podium and state your name and address when I give you the cue. Be concise and limit your comments to four minutes. You may not save your time for later or yield the remainder of your time to someone else. And after speaking, please be seated. If you are addressing a matter on the agenda, state the agenda item you are speaking about. And if you are speaking on more than one agenda item, arrange your comments in chronological order. Try not to duplicate information that has already been presented. Direct comments to the entire council, not to an individual. Questions and issues raised during this time will generally not be answered at this time. Maintain a courteous and respectful manner. If you are a presenter on an item which has been formally placed on the council agenda, this public forum process does not apply, although you are asked to be succinct in your presentation. I will always require certain manners to have public meetings, which have their own comment periods. Comments pertaining to a public hearing item should be saved for that time, and the four-minute comment period will also apply in those situations. Thank you to all that are attending. And now, I'm ready for you. State your name, please.
Madeline Copel.
Okay. And your address?
407 Oak Street.
Okay, go ahead.
This is regarding 6B in new business.
Okay.
I wanted to announce to the city council that it is my intention to petition for a special election. I have started collecting signatures and I intend to have it turned in by Friday.
Okay.
I just didn't want to surprise anyone.
Okay, we appreciate that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for announcing that.
All right, keep that in mind for our later discussion then. Are there any other public comments at this time? By those in attendance in person or those listening in via Zoom? If you are listening in via Zoom, now would be your time to unmute and let us know. I'm not seeing anything there either, so we'll close the public forum and move on then to our consent agenda.
I think we did that. Mayor, if I may, Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to have item L removed and be able to have discussion on that, on the minimum assessments.
So we'll move that down into our new business. We'll just make that item C under new business, if that's all right?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. So item L is going to move down and become item 6C now. Are there any other comments or questions on the consent agenda at this time?
Just make motion to accept it as it's been amended.
Okay, support. Roll call, please.
Kent?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Okay. We have new, moving on to item six now then. Kurt is here today from the SCDC office. He's going to talk to us about additional economic recovery incentives. And Chantel is also here.
Yeah, she's not going to get away. She's hiding in the corner. There's a bunch of she probably would like to, but no, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. And yeah, so this dates back, I was crazy to think about, we were talking about this in the office almost a year ago when we talked about comeback cash round one, right? I mean, we're mandated closures by the governor and we were trying to figure out what this whole COVID thing was going to be, but in the meantime, locally, we're trying to figure out how to assist our businesses. And we rolled out comeback cash at that time, which was a $250,000 local incentive or stimulus, so to speak, which helped our, both our businesses and our residents and community members stimulate the economy, you know, amid and face with all of those pandemic closures, per se. So $250,000 went into the economy in a 30-day span and really helped. You know, a lot of the feedback we heard at the SCDC office was very positive, both from the business standpoint and from the consumer standpoint, because if you get dollars at 30% discount, that certainly helped give you some more confidence to go spend locally. So with that feedback, you know, we kind of have been talking with businesses, we've been talking with our board of directors on what can we do moving forward as we now maybe exit the backside of this, of this COVID pandemic, as people are getting vaccinated, people are getting more comfortable being in public, you know, what can we do to help give that extra boost shot in the arm to make sure our businesses know that they're supported and appreciated? And we want to make sure we continue to put our best foot forward in assisting them in that process. Our SCDC board has considered another economic stimulus package, which is going to be recommended for you here tonight for your consideration. And Chantel here in just a minute is going to give you an overview on what that looks like. It's about a three-month process at the board level, as far as how this would look and shape. It's similar to comeback cash. The framework is going to be a little bit different, which we're excited about, which is going to help provide some balance on where the money gets spent locally, also provide a good percentage discount again for the consumer to spend. And what we're hoping is it brings people to Sheldon, not only our local people, but from outside of town, to help spend money and support our local economy. The nice thing for SCDC and for the city is we do receive an immediate return on this investment, you know, with local option sales tax, we do collect 1% on all sales, so all the money that we are investing for this incentive, we do see a 1% return automatically on that. And then number two, as we look at the return, there are some statistical data, every dollar that's spent locally gets reinvested about seven times. So those dollars get reinvested about seven times over. So if you do the math on the comeback cash at $250,000, you think about the, keep going higher, Todd.
Yeah, that's, it's not Kurt's best side.
Maybe. I mean.
I'm doing this video and repeating.
Nobody watches video and repeat. So with that, we are going to be recommending for consideration here tonight, a comeback cash round two. It's not going to be comeback cash. We're going to give it a unique name, which we're under, we actually had some great ideas today. It's not ready for rollout yet, but it's going to be coming in our next phase. So a recommendation for a similar type program, and I'm going to invite Chantel up to the podium to kind of give us a highlight of what that is, and then if you guys have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. So Chantel, watch out.
Just take a look at the angle.
Oh, you actually finished.
Like a whole foot shorter than this. All right, as Kurt mentioned, we're looking at comeback cash round two is what we're calling it for now. We'll have a jazzy name hopefully later, but we're again looking at another $250,000 in cash that would be sold. Again, a 30% discount to the consumers. The cash would be sold, this is where things get a little bit different with how we did it with the comeback cash round one. So the cash would be sold in bundles of a minimum of $500, and you could purchase a maximum of $1,000 per business or household. And then the bundles would be broken down into different categories. The reason that we're doing this is so that everyone gets a little piece of the pie, so that we make sure that, you know, restaurants are getting some, retail are getting some, and so forth. So 30% would be going to restaurants, which would be a total of $150 per $500 bundle. Retail would receive 30%, another $150. The theater would receive 10%, which would be $50. Grocery stores, convenience stores, and gas stations would receive 10%, which would be $50. And then we would have a wild card, and that would be 20%, which would be $100. So any business that doesn't necessarily fall into those categories, such as healthcare or automotive or something like that, would all go under our wild card. The wild card could also be used in addition to any of those other categories, so that additional 20% could go to retail if you wanted it to. Each category of cash would be a different color, and it would include a design appropriate for the category printed on the cash. Appropriate signage would be provided to each business, so customers would know what color cash can be used at those businesses. The promotion would be made available to SCDC members only. Participating businesses would be able to choose one category that best fits their business, or choose to be placed in the wild card category. The cash would expire six weeks from the date of sale. With comeback cash round one, we did four weeks. We're extending it a couple weeks longer. And then we, again, we would sell it just in one day, hopefully get it all sold in that one day. And then comeback cash, or excuse me, the cash would be spent same as cash, and the business would receive 100% of the funds. And we would hope to roll the promotion out in July. So, any questions on that portion of it?
Anything you wanted to add?
And so, yeah, we'll talk about the funding for the promotion. As we recall back during our budget, our last, most recent fiscal budget for '21, '22, part of it was for an economic development incentive promotion such as this, and we did budget $75,000 for that. So the funding would be 70, so $70,000 from the city to fund the promotion. SCDC would kick in $10,000, and it has been approved at the SCDC level. And then SCDC would facilitate the whole promotion from printing the cash, the marketing, to everything else. So again, this is coming as a recommendation from the SCDC board of directors. The funding has been approved from the SCDC side, and so what we're looking for consideration, I know this can't be approved tonight, consideration would be to approve the $70,000 that was approved most recently as part of the last fiscal year budget, the economic.
Any discussion, any questions for either Chantel or Kurt?
None here.
Has this come out of retail committee or just within the office? Or have you had input from the parties involved?
I would say we probably had three board meetings at the SCDC that we've discussed it, and I think probably even more in your other committees, too.
So we have discussed it at retail meetings, where everyone kind of stands. I've also had conversations as I visit with business owners and just see how things are Things are going relatively well, but we don't know what the next six months look like. You know, everyone, people have received PPP funding and that sort of thing to help in this time, but we're hoping that this will just give another boost to our local economy.
So in contrast to the last time around, I see you've put in parameters as far as how the money is to be spent. Was, is that in response, do you feel that the spending of the last round was disproportionate in some areas versus another, or what's the kind of feedback that you're getting on that?
That was more a conversation that we had in the office, just to, we, in tracking like merry money and the comeback cash and seeing where it's going, we just wanted to make sure that it, like, it's not all going to one of the bigger business. We want to make sure that everybody's receiving a little bit of the money. You know, the theater, for instance, has been hit really hard. They were closed for a very long period of time, and business is not back to normal at all there. And so we just really want to make sure that everybody's, like I said, getting a little piece of the pie and being able to profit from the dollars that are being spent.
And that's a good question, Wayne. The other thing is, if you recall the first time around, we actually excluded groceries, convenience, and gas, so they weren't even part of it, and there were businesses that were able to opt out completely. It all worked out really, really well. However, this time we thought balancing it made a lot of sense. And then the theater aspect, you raised a great point, you know, they're open, they're still rolling out movies, and we're still really trying to figure out ways to stimulate traffic in there to make sure that quality of life amenity for our community remains. And I think this is a good way for us to put our best foot forward as there's this pandemic, to make sure that it's part of the stimulus package, per se, a lot of stimulus packages, but we're doing our fair share, because that can easily get overlooked as, you know, that offering maybe it's not where people are expecting. These are, streaming options are easy to sit at home now. If you got Disney Plus or some of these streaming apps, HBO Plus, where you can actually get these new releases at home and pay $20 to $25, and we want to encourage people to make sure that we don't quality amenity like our theater and our downtown. So that's some of it why we kind of spread it out a little bit, to make sure that we spread.
And yeah, but the only reason why I ask is I wondered if there was any sort of public sentiment that, you know, it was, there was more money being spent in one sector versus the other, but I see this, you're just doing this more as a, trying to ramp up business everywhere.
Right, and it's, and we all need groceries, and it's all easy to spend $200 in groceries on a Friday night, too, so this kind of helps spread that wealth and doesn't let them have that convenience of just spending it all in one spot, too. They can spend their $100 in groceries if they want to, but the other $400 in their bundle is going to have to be spread out, whether it's restaurant, theater, eye doctor, dentist, whatever, helps spread the wealth a little bit there.
Yeah, I think that's an important dimension of this program. I want to cite it as, this is allowing people to benefit from this, not just businesses. Of course, we want businesses to thrive as well, but we also want people to feel that community has their recovery as well, and I think this offers them the opportunity to, on a basis that provides them the opportunity to use this comeback.
Any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
So if you're in general support of this concept, there will be an urban renewal advancement resolution for the city's portion on, beyond consent on the next agenda.
Okay. So are you looking for a consensus vote, an actual vote at this time, that we put it on?
I think we have what we need. I don't think we need to have a vote.
I'm sensing the same thing, that we have consensus on this.
I think so.
If we don't, please speak up now. So, okay, we'll look for that on our next agenda. So thank you to Kurt, Chantel, the office staff, the board, whatever, but for coming out again with a package that will be good for Sheldon. The first one was great. I expect even bigger and better things for this one, so thank you. All right, then let's move on to our discussion on the Ward Two council vacancy. Sam has laid out options for us. I'd like to open the discussion on that if we could, please. Any thoughts?
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
I would recommend that you proceed with adopting the procedures and set the public hearing for April 21. If Madeline or another Ward Two resident submits a petition, valid, a valid petition once is validated, I understand that that would suspend that process. And Micah, if you could help me out with this one, I think the one question that I, that I think we need to address is if we, if we receive a petition, do we need to have a special council meeting to accept the petition, or do we just move forward with administratively reaching out to the auditor and setting that?
The city has to call the election, so I think the council should act on that. That doesn't necessarily mean that you'd have to have a special meeting. What's clear from the code is that the county auditor, the commissioner of elections, needs at least 32 days' notice. And what else we know from the code is that you have to have the special election as early as reasonably practical, not as early as possible, but as reasonably practical. So if we would get a petition, we would work with the county to validate it and see what dates are available, because there's not any and all dates, it's certain dates, and then we would work backwards from there to decide whether to meet those timelines, we should have a special council meeting or not. But at this point, it's not mandatory that there be a special meeting. So I think we're kind of in a wait-and-see mode. If that's sufficient for now?
Would you agree that, would your recommendation be also that we proceed with, with adopting the procedures and setting the hearing for the 21st?
Yeah, definitely. Today, as I see it, the action that the council would take is just putting things in place if we get to that point. The code is set up in such a way that there's time periods for petitions to be called, and in the meantime, you do your concurrent planning, which is prepare for an appointment.
Any other comments or questions?
I know that, excuse me, at the last meeting, we talked about what the threshold would be for requirements for a special election, as far as the number of signatures. Sounds like that number has changed since last we talked. What is that updated number?
So, yeah, good question. Just in working with the county, we've received a different number, and we double-checked, and it's 10 as opposed to two, so. 10's the number.
Anyone else?
Question. If the petition is received and is qualified, and we receive no one who wants to run for the position, what are we left with then?
A problem.
It would be a write-in campaign then, not?
That's basically the way it trickles down. Get into the weeds in the Iowa code, and if there's not a qualified candidate, or a candidate withdraws, or something happens, you potentially have a write-in situation, which we've experienced before. It just becomes a much more expensive process.
Elections are already expensive as it is, but what would our timeline be as far as candidate nominations and that sort of thing in reference to moving to a special election?
If I may? I don't know the exact timeline on that, Wayne. It's a good question. What I can tell you is that potentially, in terms of the election, we're looking at a timeframe of, at the earliest, mid-May, and then under some scenarios, potentially, potentially into July. That would be possible. As far as when you'd have to have your papers in, I don't know. The Secretary of State's webpage does have some good information on things of that nature. Our county is very, very helpful in answering those questions. I'm confident that if someone directs the question to the city staff, we can either find the answer, put them in touch with the right person, so.
And asking you maybe more questions you don't have the answer to. How many signatures would be required for someone who's running for Ward Two? So 10 signatures would be required for anyone who is looking to seek office, in addition to one that would trigger the special election. Is that right, Sam?
That is correct.
Okay.
And it could actually be the same 10 people, it just couldn't be signed on the same day.
Gotcha.
You can't circulate the petitions to run for the office until the, until the election has been declared.
Sure.
And then there's approximately, according to Barb, at the county, there's approximately eight days to get those 10 signatures, and then 25 days after that, roughly, you would have the election. So one of the things that she said, that's, and I linked it to today's agenda as an attachment, is if a petition requesting the election doesn't come until the end of the second 14-day period, the election would likely be June 15. If it came early, for example, of this week or early next, the election could be as soon as mid-May.
So has the city received any notices of intent, as I guess it was originally for the appointment, or as it stands right now for the appointment?
We have. We received one from Sandy Johnson, and that, that was linked to the meeting two, two weeks ago.
Okay. Madeline, could I ask you a question? Would you mind coming up to the podium? As, as the one that is looking to file this petition, is this, is this a seat that you would be interested in, in serving on?
Yes, and it's also my intention to run on the ballot.
Okay. So you're not doing it just for the, the election's sake, you are interested in serving?
I am interested in running, and I know that more than one person wants the position, and I think that should mean an election.
Okay. So what you're telling us is by virtue of this statement, we shouldn't run into a write-in situation come election time?
Correct.
Okay, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, I would accept a motion to adopt the procedures and set the public hearing for April 21. So moved?
Support.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Eggers?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Okay, then let's move to item L on the consent agenda, as now the new item 6C, discussing the resolution approving a standard minimum assessment agreement for the Sheldon Crossing residential lots. And Brad, since you made your question, I'm going to let you speak to it first.
I guess, you know, since we're redoing these, it's been several years since we've looked at the minimum assessments, and I just wonder if it's the time, as we're redoing it, that we, we take some look into maybe raising the minimum assessments, or send it back to the development committee that started this process and have them look at it, just to see if we need to tweak them from, I think this was back when it started, 10, 12 years ago. Is it time that we review them? And then my other question is probably more for Micah. If we were to approve this resolution, do we have to adopt another resolution if we would decide to raise those minimum assessments?
Okay, so a little bit of background on this. This particular minimum assessment is different than you would see, for instance, with deluxe feeds or that type of project, where there's TIF money being exchanged for a rebate or something like that. This minimum assessment comes out of protective covenants that are in a development where the ground is owned by SCDC, and as part of those protective covenants, every time someone buys a lot, they're agreeing that they'll build a house within a certain amount of time, and if they don't, then be taxed at this particular rate, which I think is a $200,000 valuation. So in this instance, we would, we would probably need to double-check on this, but one of the ways this would potentially have to go is you have to amend the protective covenants, which involves the different lot owners in that development. That, that's one piece of it. Whether that could be done as to just the unsold lots, for instance, is a possibility that could be explored. So that's a discussion, and that would have to funnel through primarily through SCDC and its development committee, perhaps. As to your second question, if it was raised later- As to your second question, if it was raised later on, I think it was, what would the impact of this resolution be?
Yeah.
I think we would want to kind of relate back, and it's a good point from you, to make sure that it's addressed, so there's not conflicting resolutions.
Brad, is your thought that the minimum assessment as it stands now doesn't have enough teeth in it to spark action, or are you just more looking at it as a, hey, costs have gone up, things have gone up over the last 10 years?
Yeah, you know, since we did this 10 years ago, is it time to look at it again and readdress the minimum assessment? We've had a little conversation at the SCDC board level, and there's some not real census on it.
Sure.
You know which way to go or not. I'm just bringing it up for discussion. Do we need to raise that? And if so, is the time now to think about doing it?
Kurt, would you care to weigh in?
Yeah, so Brad brings up good points. I mean, everything in the development covenants were established 10, 12 years ago, so I mean, timing is, you know, it's been a while, so I think the review process makes a lot of sense. About lots that we've sold out there, which has been 15 or so at this point, we have yet to have a situation where somebody hasn't built within the two-year window. So we haven't had an issue where we had to go back in and assess that property at this point. Now, that's not, I don't want to jinx it at this point either, and all of a sudden, we've sold a number of lots, and all of a sudden, they're not building anything. But, you know, with construction costs and material costs the way they are right now, construction is slowing down. I mean, it could potentially be an issue where those assessments could kick in, so...
Just shooting from the hip, how many of the lots sold out there were sold to developers versus private?
So we probably have probably four lots, probably, I would say.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's a little bit under half.
Yeah.
Depending on what you would call a developer, but...
Right. Genie Cabinetry, Hellenga, Helen K Construction, Tom Bendike.
Yeah, just somewhat, I guess, yeah, saying someone that's building the home that's not going to live in it.
Correct, yeah, so four.
But remember, Wayne, the assessment still stands, no matter if it's a developer or...
Oh, yeah, and I understand that. I just wonder if it's more of a, you know, if it incentivizes public versus private investment into it. I mean, obviously, it's really, right now, I'm gonna come down to construction costs being astronomical, but...
I think that's where I'd like to get some extra opinion from the development group or from SCDC, is there's two incentives. In my appraisal of where we're at with this, there's an incentive to sell the land and move the property and to get something built, and then there is something, once you sell it, you want to incentivize getting it built in a certain period of time. So I think there has to be a balance there that works with both, in my opinion. You gotta have enough there to put teeth into making sure that they follow through with the agreement, but add on the other part that it's still low enough where it still attracts people to want to move out there and perform the build. So that's why I'd like to make sure that we got a broad enough input into this, which I think Brad does too, so that when we do make a decision on it, we understand why we're doing it and how it's gonna work out, instead of kind of shooting from the hip, like you said.
You're right. Well, I guess, the way that I see it, you're not gonna build a structure and have that value be $200,000. It's going to be more. So I guess maybe to that end, Brad, I can see your point of, you know, what do we, you know, we need to make sure that we're keeping up with the times and that. I just wonder, is it gonna be, do we have enough? There's obviously, I mean, there's interest, but there's a lot of open lots too yet, you know, but I don't know, are we gonna run into a situation where it becomes, you know, you put a big enough number on there where it starts scaring people away?
I can't imagine that you can build a house for $200,000.
I certainly wouldn't think so.
So I don't, and it's my understanding that it is, that we have never taken advantage, this has never come to apply, and hopefully, it never does.
Right.
Yeah.
But I suppose it's something worth looking at. The purpose seems to be that you don't want to have people buy lots just to speculate on owning lots, that they're gonna have to pay some taxes. The purpose of this is to prevent that. I guess then, if that's the purpose, then is $200,000 enough, or should it be more? I guess it's worth looking at.
Can I speak to that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
It's important for the council to understand that this does not create a new requirement or obligation. It has been in place for a number of years already, that if you purchase a lot in this development and you don't complete construction within a two-year timeframe, then this kicks in. This is not adding something new to anybody.
Right.
This particular document is just a template to be used for future sales so that we don't have to come back to council every time to have you just give your kind of formality of approval. So if Kurt goes buys a new lot, in the closing context, this gets signed up and addressed and hopefully never used because he gets his work done in two years. So this is not a new requirement. That's important for the public to know.
Maybe help with clarity on this too, Micah, if possible, is that if we decide not to take action, table it until we get some feedback, is the existing standard assessment still in force for any new?
If you don't take action, all you're doing is not approving this template. The $200,000 still applies.
Okay.
If you want to change that amount, what I was trying to say earlier is that's gonna have to funnel through SCDC and the amendment of the protective covenant process, which is out of your hands to a large degree. The only reason this is in front of the city at all is because the city's the taxing authority in this jurisdiction. This isn't your minimum assessment, other than you're the taxing authority. It comes from SCDC.
So essentially, SCDC is asking us to deal with this?
Yes, because you're the taxing authority. In order to go ask the county assessor to impose a minimum assessment, the county assessor's office is going to want the city to sign off, and that's what this does.
Okay, to clarify though, are we saying that this should go back to SCDC, and it's their decision, or is it our decision?
Your only decision is to say, we're okay with this resolution for use in future sales. If you want the number changed, you can say SCDC, would you please think about it and have your development committee meet and talk about it?
Okay.
But you plugging in $500,000 or any other number here makes no difference, because you can't change their protective covenants today.
So just by creating a new resolution a month from now, two months from now, we could do that easily, if we wanted to amend, if they come back and said they wanted to amend, okay.
Yeah, and if they go through all the hoops, you're not stuck to this.
And on the other side of the coin, Micah, maybe I wasn't clear where I was heading, but if we took no action on this, would the SCDC be without a tool until we did?
No. It just would mean that when Kurt sells 10 lots this month, no pressure, he's gonna have to do it on an ad hoc basis as opposed to having in his toolkit this to get signed up at the time of closing.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, to Pete's point, I mean, really, the only thing we're doing here differently is that we're using this template now with the buyers to sign off on the acknowledgement that there also, there's a minimum assessment part of it. And then it'll grant, then this template will grant Angie and the mayor to sign off, and then it was just gonna go in our file. It'll go in the sale file and tell the two-year window is up, and if they don't build, then all we're gonna do is take that document to the recorder's office to record it so that assessment kicks in. If they build within two years, it essentially stays in their file, it doesn't get recorded. It's just us being able to be more diligent in the process, 'cause if we have to go collect signatures on a lot kicking a minimum assessment on a buyer two years down the road, that's gonna be harder to collect. They're gonna be probably a little bit more hesitant to maybe sign it, so we're just being proactive and trying to get this minimum assessment signed up front as we're closing on the lot, so we can keep that tool in our file, record it as necessary down the road. The dollar amount just coming from what's in the covenants at this point. I mean, if we want to change it, we can change it. This is giving us a tool to make sure that we can adequately go get that assessment after that two-year window is up, if that makes sense.
And to keep your consent agenda less cluttered.
Amen.
Yeah. All right. I guess I would be in favor of accepting it as written here, and then, you know, should the SCDC want to go through the hoops of updating the covenant and that sort of thing and raising that dollar amount, we can amend.
That's up to them.
Yeah.
It's their call.
Yeah, we can amend.
I would agree with that.
So are you making that as a motion to approve the resolution as it stands?
Yes.
Okay, is there a support for that?
Support.
Take your pick. Peter, Tom. All right, any further discussion?
Nope.
Then let's...
Thanks for the clarification on it, Tom.
Pardon me?
I said, thanks for the clarification on it, Tom.
All right, roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Ferrahona?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Okay, we move on to reports, part of the meeting. Sam, is there anything from you further?
Do not.
Todd, anything from you today?
Yes, thank you. Just thought I'd give you a couple of project updates. The cure-in-place lining project for sewer lining on Core Street and Washington Avenue has started. They're doing cleaning right now, then they'll do cammering soon to make sure they agree that the project can actually happen without any other previous repairs. And the lining actually followed a date. The Oak Street North 18th Street reconstruction project has started. I'm sure you've seen North 18th is tore out. Once they get done with the storm sewer work and get the subgrade work done on North 18th, the next place they intend on going is Oak Street, Washington, and they'll tear out down to 15th Avenue, and they'll skip that intersection. That way, the people in that complex still have access. And I thought they were gonna head, then continuing heading east, but now I believe they're actually, once North 18th is paved and back open, they're gonna start on that end and work back west. That way, they can lay the storm sewer pipe uphill and sit down. It's a more appropriate way. Anyways, there'll be more to come on that as they move forward. The other thing I thought I should tell you is in the month of March, we sold our first Lewis and Clark water to Clayboro Water System. We sold them 9 million and 70,000 gallons over the month. So I talked with Steve, the manager out there, who says this working balance is a huge help to the system. So that is, they average 292,000 gallons a day. He told me they wanted 300, so that's been really good. Grants, let's just update you on a couple of grants that we recently applied for. We applied for the $5,000 sign grant through DOT. We did not receive that grant. It's not because we had a bad application, they just simply ran out of money. There's not even a ranking system in that application. It's first application in that gets money until the balance is zero, and then they notify you and you apply again the next round. My understanding that we'll get an update on that in November, so we'll be looking to reapply either later this year or next year. Fast At Grant for Western Avenue, attended that meeting last week. We did receive a grant tune of $748,000, so excited about that. We will need a local match of 1.652 million. That will be needed in fiscal years 24, 25, and 25, 26, so we're looking at construction season of 2025. This year's process was a good process, and it was a little simpler just because the total dollars of applications were down two years past. So there was about $4 million to give out and just a little over $6 million in applications. So we were able to fund actually seven and a half of the 11 applications. I have unless you have a question.
Not seen any, so Kurt, anything else from you? Scott, anything you'd like to share today? Angie?
No, thank you.
Anything else from you, Micah?
No, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could we talk briefly about the fire truck?
Yes.
So just a brief heads-up, you're all aware that the aerial, that's a 1994 aerial with a 1984 ladder on it, and it has been totaled. We have, I have discussed with the fire department, the idea of, is because one of the truck, one of the replacement trucks that has come across our radar screen, it has a salvage title, and so we did have the internal conversation about whether it was possible to replace the 1984 ladder and keep the 1994 truck, because you could get, we could get the $164,000 from ICAP minus approximately $6,500. And so my understanding is, is that it really doesn't make sense to do that by the time you look at the age of the existing truck, 1994, and the cost of attach, you'd have to find a new ladder or a used ladder somewhere that would fit a 1994 truck. So we want you to know, we've already been doing a fair amount of due diligence to find out how we can best move forward. When I first found out about this, because when we have purchased in the last few years, everything that we've purchased for ambulances and fire trucks, we have, I have asked for replacement cost insurance. This truck had actual cash value insurance, and that concerned me at first because I was worried about what we would be missing out on in terms of replacement, but when ICAP says they're covering something at replacement value, that's at the purchase price. The purchase price of this truck was about $185,000, and they're offering us $164,000 plus. They won't paint the new truck yellow, but they would put the decals, and so there's a cost to that too. So we've actually fared pretty well. I mean, it's obviously gonna affect our premiums in the future. We're thankful that nobody was hurt, and now we have to move forward. It's not an emergency, but it is urgent, and so we're going to be, I'll be working with the fire department to look at options, a little bit on funding very quickly. State Fire Marshal's office has a revolving loan fund of a very low interest rate, it's up to $150,000 with about a month or so turnaround time. We have USDA rural development that we had already applied for for this particular truck replacement. We've already moved that up with rural development and made that a higher priority because our application is still pending. We could get up to $50,000 from that. Another option is general obligation bonding. We'd like to, and another option would be to, you know, and this is something that fire department and I will be discussing about what the new fire department depreciation fund can contribute. We would like to avoid, if at all possible, tapping into the ambulance depreciation fund for the funding.
Do you have an update as far as the timeline for the USDA grant?
Was hoping to hear by early summer, so we may have to move without it. Hopefully, we can, hopefully, we'll hear back soon, so.
Are you looking at used and new, both?
Mainly focused on used. Do you want to address that?
You know, we met as officers and, you know, we did our due diligence over the, you know, repair. We also looked at, okay, do we keep the truck and put a different ladder on, but there's nothing out there that you can find, and then the cost of doing that. So right now, we're focused on used, but we've also just talked to a few companies about new. So, you know, we budgeted two years out, $500,000 to replace that truck, to buy something in the 10-year-old family, because new, you're talking over a million. And we just, as a fire department, hard time justifying that big dollar amount. So right now, our mainly primary is looking at used. You know, like I said, we've talked to the companies that make new ones, but if you go new, you're over a year out.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, there's a year waiting list on a new unit, so...
Yeah. And we do have the option, if we come to push and shove, there is also rental. We have a rental insurance that's available, so we're gonna go down that road and check into that, what's available, and so we've done a lot of homework, there's still a lot more to become.
So is it fair to say that the existing unit is not usable right now?
It is not. It is not usable, yes. The ladder part of it. The pump would be able to be serviced, but the ladder is out of commission. So, and wouldn't put anybody up in it, so.
So the department's without a ladder capability right now?
Yeah, with the, without that capability. We could use it as a pumper if we need to.
And how often, on average, are we using the ladder in a year?
Can I go off the top of my head? I'd say four times already this year.
So, in the time that it's been out of commission, odds would say that we would have needed it or could have used it?
We could have used it already, once, so.
So, and underscores the need of.
Yes.
Where's the closest?
Sioux Center or Orange City.
Okay.
Yeah, and they've both stepped up and said, if we need something, all we need to do is call. And we've always known that. Any department, you need something, just call. No, I'll come, so.
Anything else? Can we move on? Counsel to my left, anything from either of you? To my right?
No, thank you.
My only comment is regarding the library opening. I do have a, we do have an opening on that board. We have had one letter of interest turned in, and I'm inclined to be accepting that. The applicant is a good one, but if there is anybody out there, time is of the essence. You need to let us know, either city office, myself, one of the gonslmen, and they will tell me. But we'd like to make that appointment by our next meeting, so. Press, if you could get that word out again, please, appreciate it. With that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Farahona?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
We are adjourned. You're always the last one.